Thanks, Carson. Okay, it is six oh three and I'd like to call the November twentieth, twenty twenty-three Eastline Board Special Meeting to order. Those of you can stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comment? Any public comment? That hearing none. Closed public comment for tonight and first order of business at special recognition for a Board of Education member. So, tonight is Candace's last Board of Ed meeting after many years on the board and we do wanna thank you collectively for all the work you've done, hard work, the impact you've had, which has been significant and really appreciate all you've done for the district and the Board of Ed and everybody out there appreciates all that you've done, so thank you and our town will benefit. Our town will benefit as well with you being on the Board of Selectment, so congratulations on that. And I'll pass it to Jeff. We couldn't be could be more happy for you and our town, but how many years of being on this board, you know, was twelve, twelve, eleven, twelve?
And I started in two thousand and twelve.
So, yes, okay, so it's a little
It's been a pleasure. It truly is. We've been through a lot together, that's for sure.
We have.
Districting, elementary projects, who needs COVID?
Amazing. So whoever was in charge of doing this? Wow, you, yeah, these are absolutely beautiful. Thank you so very, very much. I'm gonna try not to cry.
That's some of us in the district.
We have a Board of Ed card, but we have white numbers of six.
No worries.
So, why don't we, when others come? If more feel, yeah, then we'll bring it.
Very good.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So I'm not going to cry and I certainly did not prepare anything because I don't really work well that way. I like to be off the cuff. I have enjoyed every single moment of my time here. I'm grateful and I feel honored to have been able to serve my community the way that I have and I would not do anything over. We have been through so much through the years and we have, I believe, collectively, not singularly, collectively transformed our district into an amazing place. And I think that so much is going to be happening and I'm excited to see the growth from a different perspective. So it's not really goodbye, right? Because I'm still gonna be coming. I'm still going to be. I feel the need to say that because it makes me feel better and then I stop crying. As soon as I start to say that, it helps. The Cape Convention was amazing, but it was bittersweet too because it was my last one. I'm trying to get them to create some sort of position, some sort of something to liaison maybe. I don't know. You never know down the future. But it's been fantastic. So I look forward to continuing to support our district and participate in as many things as I possibly can because the support is still there for our kids, our teachers, our district, our people. And thank you.
We know that seat over there where Kevin sitting will always be there, so you'll take it.
Have select woman maybe created and just bring it when I come, you know, something of that nature and then you can do whatever they want. But, yes, and I, and I look forward to it. It's gonna be good. Thank you, guys.
Hey, so we have some minutes to approve. We have the minutes from the November sixth regular meeting.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the November sixth Board of Education meeting on second.
Any changes, comment? Jill, if, because we can't see her, so if you can thumbs up or say yes or something, so.
Yes, yes, I agree with the minutes. That's fine.
Favor, say aye. Abstain. Minutes pass. Have our Eastline student representative, Bagheera.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. So to start off, I just wanna talk about Veterans Day. So that was run by National Honor Society, which I'm a part of. We decorated this room and it was really meaningful. I really enjoyed decorating. And after we decorated, we brought the veterans in, we greeted them, we had the catering class, served them breakfast and lunch later on if they stayed. And overall, it was just really meaningful and I feel like it really, you know, made the day more meaningful for that group. And I know everyone in National Honor Society who helped out enjoyed it. And we hung out with the veterans for a good hour or so and we really enjoyed talking with them. Senior photos were due November first, but CB kindly extended the deadline because lots of students didn't turn them in. So those are slowly flooding in for the yearbook. The Eastline High School Math League placed second in the first Eastern Connecticut Math League meet. And they missed first place by one point, which is unfortunate, but they placed first of the ten teams in the second meet. And Mingwen, Avni and Jari all had perfect scores in that second one. There's a field trip to New York with the film and morning show classes the other day and I have friends in those classes and they really enjoyed that field trip. And they said they really enjoyed going to the museum. The Powderpuff Game is tomorrow at six and the practices this year have been a lot more organized because the coaches were handpicked. And I've been going and it's been really fun for me and my friends and everyone is gonna get playing time, so hopefully more parents will show up. Because I know last year, not everyone got playing time. The senior class Safe Grad is doing a fundraiser with Panera and they're also holding a bake sale during Election Day at the high school. And they'll be fundraising at the Powderpuff Game. Students of the Month for October were RJ Zhang and Tara Gutman. Tara was in my class when Mr. Hernandez presented her the award and she really enjoyed like the certificate and like the speech that Hernandez gave for us. Avni Cabra, Mingwen Duan, Jari Ping and Albert Zhu were AIM qualifiers, which is a pre-qualifier for the US Math Olympiad. Last week, the Viking Band placed second at the National Championships with a score of ninety-one point four. And they won best percussion and best visual performance, which is exciting. And the boys soccer team won state championships the other day against Notre Dame Private School with a score of three to two. And two out of the three goals were scored by Robbie Stoddard and he was ECC Athlete of the Week last week. And last thing is just the goats that were brought to school. They were sweet. They were so cute and I know a lot of students enjoyed them. I have so many pictures and I really enjoyed having them here. So many students were outside during lunch and like even a lot of teachers during their classes, a lot of students to go outside and a lot of students really enjoyed that. So I feel like all the students always enjoy the animals that come around here, so, yeah.
Therapy goats, you know?
Yeah, they're so cute. So cute. I talked to Mr. Olson. Like have them back, but I think if they do have them back, they should have more of the people who kind of watch over because I know some of the students were chasing after them and I felt kinda bad, but I was enjoying it. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. You don't have to run out, though. Tomorrow night, though. I can't wait. Tomorrow night on the field. Yes, we'll be cheering. Thank you.
You know, very shortly, someone else will be following her out as well, but we
We have Kevin as their.
Okay, just really quick, town hall closes at eleven thirty on Wednesday. It's a half day because usually Friday, since now Friday is a half day, we're gonna pick it up on Thursday, uh, Wednesday. Also, we're garbage pickup. If there's two things to really get people upset in town, it's close the transfer station and mess up the garbage pickup. Those will get people upset more than anything. So normally you would pick up Wednesday's, Thursday's garbage on Friday. This year, you'll pick it up on Wednesday. So if you normally put your garbage out on Thursday, don't put it out Friday. They're picking it up Wednesday. If your garbage was normally Friday, it used to get picked up on Friday, they'd bring people in overtime. They're not. It'll be picked up Monday. So no garbage pickup Friday. If your garbage went out, normally went out Thursday, do it Wednesday, on Friday, do it Monday. And we posted it all over the place, so that's on there. That's the closing charter revision, not the election. Eight of the eleven questions passed. The only three that didn't were related to financial things such as, you know, not forcing things to go to town meeting. Still gonna have to do it if it's over ten thousand dollars unless it's a grant that we've been able to get around that. So that's the only thing now. Starting with the election in two thousand and twenty-five, the first select will be a four-year term and Board of Select will be four-year terms as well. After Stigret, the first time it'll be a couple, have to be two-year, rest four years. Town Clerk and Tax Collector will be administrative hires, not appointments because appointments are done politically. This is an administrative hire, it'll be a first select hire. And it'll be a permanent position. You won't go for Town Clerk or Tax Collector. And also, if there's a vacancy in an elected position, it will be filled for the remainder of the term. If it's two and a half years, it's filled for two and a half years, not just for the next election. So that's on a recommendation by the Secretary of the State, as well as a lot of other things like that to avoid any conflicts. As you've probably, if I don't, Mary Ann has probably shared, healthcare costs are estimated to go up between three and seven percent next year. That is a nice word to hear. I mean, we've been here, last year was twelve percent. Got backed off to ten, so now we're in there this month. So that sounds really good. Another thing is to, as a few of you at the meeting last week, we established a Human Services Commission now, which will go into effect on the twenty-seventh of this month. It'll be headed up by Sarah Furman and it'll be sort of moving from there. We were one of only four towns in the region that did not have one, so we will now, and it'll, it's not just youth and families, youth, family and seniors, so get to everybody. So we've had support from Commission on Aging and stuff like that, so I'm glad that that is starting off now. Good news, Buys by the Bay on Friday night, there had to be three hundred people there. It was a really fun experience. All the people that decorated buoys, that hung them on the trees, got to come to see them. My son and daughter-in-law and grandson did theirs. They live right across the street from Camp Net. Theirs is the Niantic Coyote. Yeah, the Niantic Coyote is my, is my son's family. Yeah, it was, because he was out there all summer, right across the street from them. Yesterday, it and the funds from that all benefit the Public Trust who do a lot of stuff, the Boardwalk, the Flagpole. They just do so many activities in town. Yesterday was a chili cook-off. Proceeds went to Karen Share. Flanders Fish Market won it. It was really good, a lot of fun. It was sold out weeks in advance. Coming up this weekend is on Saturday is the Holiday Stroll from three to seven with the lighting of the Christmas tree at five o'clock, which my last real official act will actually allow my grandson to turn the lights on for the Christmas tree. So that'll be at five o'clock with Santa coming. The Light Parade will be on the ninth, weather permitting, tenth if it isn't, but the Light Parade is on the ninth. And just very much thank you because twenty-six years ago, as Candace pointed out, you know, leaving here, twenty-six years ago, my first elected office meeting was with the Board of Education. In the old library before they even started the renovation, which is now twenty-six years old. So I just appreciate Jeff working with you over the years and several other superintendents. Actually, I was involved in hiring two of them, Jim Lombardo and Paul Smotis. So looking forward to what comes. I've been working real closely with Dan Cunningham on turnover. Town will be in very good hands, so looking forward to moving forward. And any questions, be glad to answer. And then if it's a tough one, I'll say give Dan a call.
Thank you for everything.
Yeah, thank you. My pleasure. We'll see you around the sports world for sure.
Oh, yeah, I will be, I'm gonna be running the shot clock for Kevin because I've done that at college level, so I'd much rather do it in, you know, here than that. And I've told him, as long as
The basketball shot clock.
Yeah, I'll do the shot clock. Instead of paying, I know you pay people, I said, instead of paying me, just free admission to all sporting events, so that worked out good.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Karen. It was a pleasure. So, thank you.
Sure you don't want to stay? Don't you want to miss us?
I will, I will miss you. Well, Jamie can explain how she's my daughter and her daughter is my granddaughter, but that's another.
Those trees really look nice, too.
I had a sip, I had chai and sat there Sunday morning. It was so nice.
Okay, so moving on, we have a consent agenda item.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as posted. I second.
All those in favor, say aye. It's up from Jill. Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. The consent agenda item is for the approval of the proposed date change of the Eastline High School Field Trip to Italy, Austria and Germany from August, from April, April eighth to April sixteenth in two thousand and twenty-four. So just, it was a date, date change. We had already approved the chart previously. Okay, moving on to discussion action, we have the proposed Eastline Public School Calendar for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year.
Yeah, bringing this forward a little bit earlier, I think at one point, at least about a month or two ago, I mentioned, we could maybe bring that forward a little earlier, so we met with administration, we met with PDAC, our, our committee that does all our professional development. And we are rolling out the draft for, for next year, twenty-four, twenty-five. Couple of key points with this, it got a little squirrely for when to try and start the year off because we didn't, we like to, wanted to try and give, you know, staff more time in the summer and not start too early. But then, so we don't want to start too late as well. So we ended up splitting the last two weeks of August where we'll start convocation on the twenty-second or recommending starting convocation on the twenty-second Thursday. Then it would be a staff professional development day on the twenty-third, that Friday, and then teachers would have the opportunity obviously to come back because that's their day on Monday. Get those, those three days before kids come back, so they could come back in Monday, finish up getting classrooms set up. And then we'd have a three-day week that week with the thirtieth being the first another PD day, which will waste some additional time at the beginning of the year. So we go three days first week, four days next week, and then five days, three, four, five. We like to kind of try and stagger that. We've done that in the, in the past for students, so it's not a world of coming five days for everybody. Moved around a few PD days, nothing to any great extent. Another kind of the rest of the calendar is pretty much similar to this year. We still have our three snowflake days. One area we had a lot of conversation on was the last day of the school year because right now, as the calendar's proposed, it's Monday, the sixteenth of June, and Monday's kind of an ugly day to end the school year on. However, there's always the possibility of having, you know, more than three snow days, which would bump it. If we don't get snow days, we could potentially use one of our snowflake days and have school that day and bring graduation and bring last day of school back to Friday. So that's an option. So we, we've got some, some play in there within the, within the calendar for some options, if, you know, if necessary. Because again, Monday's kind of, we never really want, or I've had a graduation on it, Monday, Friday is usually the favorite day. So that's, I know, Jamie, we, we were preparing for your comments. We're trying to make a list. Was that?
April first?
Not four.
Yeah, you, we, we've continued to, to use the April first target. And it's just, it's easier rather than messing around and doing it any other way. But again, we've got some play there.
I'm gonna go to Jamie.
I'm not gonna say a word because you've all heard me say it a bit, so I'm actually not gonna say all the stuff I've ever said. I'm just gonna sit my mouth. But I will comment on the last day of school. And as a parent on the Safe Grad Committee, tell you, it is not fun to have you bounce the last day of school around.
Yeah.
Because they can't book a party if the last day of school bounces around, right?
Well, and remember too, you always have the option because we go one hundred and eighty-one days to say.
But I'm just saying, like, if, if you're thinking about making it the Friday, then make it the Friday now. Don't make them a week. Figure out if it's Monday or Friday. If you're gonna make it Friday, make it Friday. If you're gonna make it Monday, make it Monday. Don't keep them on the wire bouncing around with it.
Can graduation be the Friday, even if the last day of school is Monday?
It can be.
It can be. It's just, if they're gonna book their party based on the last day of school.
Yeah, you can make it because, again, we've got one eighty-one, seniors can, you know, no problem.
That's cool. Gonna be my only comment on this calendar. If I'm gonna save all my comments, then, because everyone's always heard, already heard them. You can listen to last year's.
I'm pretty sure inevitably that day will change for everybody, but definitely for seniors, we can do graduation Fridays, I think, no problem. That's doable. And that would make a lot of sense. Now, if we have nine snow days, you know, that's kind of, that's the only impact that we could have, but, you know. Maybe we'll be lucky, that sort of was great, starting off well this, this fall with, if we can get to the holiday break with, you know, without any, any days, we're in pretty good shape. So, we'll see. But
That's your, what's your comments?
Comment on the the three-day, three-half days in a row, that's always very difficult for, for elementary. I didn't say, Lee would have said it if she was here, so. But, yeah, so that's definitely something that's always very tough for you know, childcare purposes. I know a lot of parents, and I know that, you know, the after, aftercare is an option, but especially for those days, folks that don't, are not regulars in that there's limited spots and they left quickly, so maybe even thinking of increasing capacity, maybe that's what it takes so that, you know, parents are okay with coverage.
Yep, so that's, that's gonna roll that way this, this coming March.
I had to get special permission from my kid in today's after-school program. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, I don't think we've, in the past, had to turn families away. We're, we have a good problem this year and that our numbers are running really high, which is phenomenal. But we didn't necessarily staff for that this year. And we have to maintain a safe environment for our students and we have to make a, a safe ratio of adults to students. And so we did make the decision as a result of our past, one of our most recent half-days to put a limit on the number of participants. We will be, because we have set certain parameters this year with our staffing and expectations, it's really hard to change that stock staffing model right now, but it's a consideration we have for next year in terms of increasing capacity. We even talked about usually those well, the half-days are in the different programs, but the full days usually are in one location and we're talking about actually hosting those at three separate locations to increase capacity and not have so many students in one location. So those are some of the conversations we're having right now. I do know that we do take advantage of the half-days in March to also offer the school day SAT, right, in March? What is, what is it? What's the half-day?
Last year, but.
We're not doing that this year? Okay.
It was beyond half-day time.
But we can, I mean, we could certainly for, we could bring it back and we added that half-day as a result of a request from elementary school teachers sharing that they didn't have enough time for conferences with parents. So that was an add in response to a request from elementary teachers. So we can certainly bring it back to them to see. You know, we can, we can either just reduce it and have them only have two half-days. In the fall, they have the full day and a half-day. Or we can look at, instead of doing three half-days, do a full day and a half-day in the spring as well, similar to the fall.
That was just looking at that. It's gonna, that's gonna, would bump us out to Tuesday, the seventeenth.
That would have an impact on the last day of school.
Yeah.
So I can go back and do some further digging with regards to, we've done this now, this will be our third, this is our second.
This is our second year this year because we haven't had them yet this year. I did, I did get great feedback from teachers that it, the conferences didn't feel as rushed. They had time to look at data, you know, I don't know, Jamie and Esteban, if you have experiences from a parent's perspective, but. My husband and I split-flop, like, so on short weeks like this, we have to be in office two days a week. So we take turns on who's home during the week. So whichever day that conference falls on, whichever parent's home, is the parent who goes, so like.
From a conference perspective, do you feel as though there, did it seem less rushed as a parent in a conference?
It is the same. It does. Because if, because at the conference invariably always goes over before. So you're always running late for yours and you end up always going over. Unless you're the, that first one or like the last one, you don't feel rushed.
Circle back on the staffing piece for the after-school programs. I know we were capping, but if we tried somehow, I don't know. So we struggle to find staff as it is.
Just a suggestion. So we have the program at the high school where the kids are basically interning within the class. Alexander does it, a few other kids are doing it. That might be something that you can utilize for those days. I know that if most likely, hands down, if she was approached, she would do it. And I would foresee other kids doing it as well. And then that would help them, of course.
The class, okay.
You know, it's just, it's a
Yeah, sort of. We could actually add that as a additional program, you know, that's housed here maybe even. So I can talk to Andrea about it.
Yeah, I like the idea that you could put out too, as far as not just one diff, one spot, having it in all three different spots. And that's really for convenience, to be honest with you. And also for capacity. You know, it, it used to be where you could do that at each one of the schools from what I can recall. And it was, it was a good thing.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You know, take part in it. I know I did myself. So I think that that would be beneficial.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're typically, we were hosting about sixty families last year and it's up to eighty this year. You know, so, and even more on certain days, so.
So March will be here before we know it. When does, do you know when Andrea starts to?
He advertised usually like a month and a half hours. She says she's really good about sending. I know when I drop off at the forecare, there's usually if there's a holiday coming up, she's got a little packet there that tells you all the holidays for the year and all the half-days for the year. And she gives you a deadline, but I don't know about you, but I sign up for the whole year in advance. So if I do any changing, I have to get permission to change my calendar. So you're kind of like on pins and needles waiting to get your approval.
I think it's definitely workable. Yeah, I mean, it's just finding the right solution for us.
I agree.
Yeah.
Questions for me. So what about using like substitute teachers to help? Yeah, if this Yeah, but if we need, I mean, if it, I hate to think we're turning, for an extra substitute teacher or two, which is not a total, a lot of money. If, if we're turning away parents who need it, can we just?
Yeah, it's
We have to coordinate it with Kelly.
You have to talk with Kelly to see if it's a viable option because it's like a different, it's still part of our school system, which is good. So I would think they probably would approve it.
Just have to, yeah, make sure.
But that's something, yeah.
It's just something that, yeah, because
If we
Parents' options.
Yeah, and if somebody's subbing for only half a day that day, they might be more interested in being able to sub a full day. It's just a different, different venue.
And then my other question. Can't just can't, I mean, work, high school also has a half-day these three days, right? But they don't have conferences or they're limited minimum, there's some, but it's
Yeah, we have to
We offer, but it's unlimited.
Actually, there's two half-days of conferences at the, at the secondary level. And then the third half-day is used for professional development at the building-based level. That's how we did it last year.
I mean, I'm just wondering, can, can I mean, I'm just wondering, can, can the? High school students have a. High school students hopefully turn, like, put your earmuffs on, but can they have a full day of school? Uh, rather than.
We've talked about that.
There's busing issues.
But well, there's busing and there's the issue of a lot of high school kids are watching their younger siblings.
Right.
Uh, okay, yeah, it makes sense. Yeah, 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 it makes sense. Yeah, okay, Candace.
So just another idea, when he's, when um, it, which is a great idea, Eric, but to get away from actually paying. Um, and you know, looking at the inside resources that we have in school. I mean, we do have some clubs. We have the key club. We have some other clubs that, you know, really invoke leadership and that type of thing. That might be a. Uh, an opportunity to, to offer those opportunities for volunteer hours and that type of thing with the kids.
Yeah, we certainly can look into that. Um, reach out some of the club advisors to see who might want to sign up for.
The staffing would be no hit to the operating budget because we could use the revenue account to offset the cost, so.
Yeah, yeah, there's, 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 there are funds to pay people. That's not the problem.
Okay, good.
We can give people, if we can give students a development. Can't then.
Combination of both, right? So, um. I will bring those ideas back to Andrea.
I think for those if um. We could get a better sense, right? So we're not approving this tonight.
You can if you want, but you don't. Well, it's always the.
That feedback back, so we have a better idea of what maybe the resource situation looks like when we then go approve.
Or before and after care?
Yeah. Few ideas kind of. You know. Percolating here that. Uh, right, and some extra. Um, kind of tapping into some other resources, so is, you know. Are these?
Maybe I could, so. If the answer, if, if we'll sort out the resource and where it's gonna come from, but if you're comfortable that. With all these ideas, we're gonna get resourcing somehow.
Yeah.
Then we don't have to close the door for any parent and child.
I am confident that we can adjust the way we are running programming for next year to service all families.
You okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, no, but I think that's the, ultimately that's the goal.
Yeah, and I think we can make some tweaks to. You know, what we're talking about is actually going back to the drawing board for this year. You know, um, I think for next year, we already know some of the changes we're gonna make so that we can. Service them because we want to be able to. We don't want to turn anybody away. It's just a matter of what we've designed for this year. Is more than what we're expecting, which is a good problem to have. It is, but we have to look at supplementing it in different ways. Yeah.
Further, um, discussion? Don't want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion.
Aside.
Prove the proposed Eastline Public School Calendar for the twenty-four to twenty-five school year.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain. Okay, so calendar is set. Um, moving on, discussion, action, um. Uh, Superintendent Newkins' goals for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Yeah, so this, sorry, this got a little lost in translation because um usually we're doing our Board of Ed goals later. And we tie them in together, but we did our Board of Ed goals right out of the gate. And I was so focused on those uh and that work um that I, I said, I need to set goals, but um, so I sat down to set them. I'm like, well. I'm, the Board of Ed goals are my focus, so I tried to just tweak these to be more of like a supportive, engaging, monitoring, overseeing. Approach. Um, so I did tweak some of the outcomes to, to reflect that, but. And I'm looking at the two side by side. I was like, I, I, I'm doing these, I'm do, you know. So I didn't see, I didn't want to deviate off of, you know, uh, the detail that we all got into with your goals. So if that makes sense, um, and then obviously I continue to follow. The, the five categories uh as well, which are always, you know, important, that involve all aspects of my role, you know, um. Find a budget, uh, resources, et cetera, et cetera, so um. So again, I, I really, I'm kind of, I gravitate more towards your goals and it, because we're collecting evidence and collecting. You know, some of the, the outcomes here, um, and using this as kind of the overseeing of that and I'll just. Merge and bring both forward, let me. Meet later in the year and we should really think about doing like a mid-year in like January, early February to kind of see. Where we're, how we're doing basically, a check-in, I would recommend. So, does that, do that kind of works?
Any questions for Jeff? And so, uh, when we do the check-in. It's kind of a check-in on both. The Board of Ed and your goal.
Yeah.
So intertwined.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, we'll look at the outcomes for both. I think we just crosswalk and walk down. And see how we're, you know, how we're giving it, uh, if we've got any recent data too, we could, we could provide uh as well. It's just like pathways, for instance, you can get some numbers there. So.
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve superintendent's goals for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained. Motion passes. Okay. That closes our discussion action items for today. We move on to administration report.
Um, I know we're, we're gonna jump into budget. Sure, here, I, I'll just share. You know, I want to thank you and Lisa, uh, Jamie and Candace, um, and uh. Ames, uh, Dave Fasulo, Italy, should we, you know, we did a great job with our presentation. On uh, on Friday, we had a lot of positive feedback from the folks in our, uh, in our session. Um, and uh, you know, just kudos for. How it rolled out and uh, and the great job and the participation. So I brought a copy of our presentation too, if anybody wants to. In, I'm sure most was gonna be here, but see it, we can share electronic as well, but it was really good.
Talked about it all weekend, it was good.
They really did.
Yeah.
Appreciate you breaking in the board members and kind of contributing to that presentation.
Good.
Thank you.
That goes a long ways because people are seeing board members and sharing and invested and so it really uh.
Let's get our, get our student in there.
Yes, yeah, that was really nice. At least she was able to, to blow up the, I would hear the rock.
No, and it was received well. I think we represented. It well and showcased Dave. Is all his good work.
I also think that the information, um, just collaboratively, people were looking at it because it's something that they want to do. But they, how do I get there type of thing? Um, so I thought that was pretty interesting. And then also I did, I did visit Westbrook's. Um, Leslie was phenomenal, uh, and I actually brought and I'll, I'll bring it to you to the office. I forgot to bring it tonight, but. Um, they have a huge book that is kind of detailed and designed and, you know. On some areas, they're very progressed and in other areas, not so much, but I just think that the collaborative with other districts. Will help benefit uh equally, so um, I know that she's gonna be reaching out to Dave and talking and stuff. But it was just fantastic.
It's nice we got to that point, yeah, where we started to talk more about collaboration with the districts.
Yes, and you're hearing it more. You're hearing it more through the districts that this is something that they want to, you know, adopt and put into place. But how do it?
And organically, I think without that structure, they are. Doing some community of practice, kind of building out um, a cadence to. Just have a forum to discuss and talk and share best practice or, or other ideas.
Yep. And Nelson, you were, you were there as well, uh, so thanks for coming to our session. Appreciate it.
It was a great session. It was a great event.
Thank you. Glad you were there. And, oh, sorry, that's, um, yeah, that, that was really, I'm gonna jump into budget and hopefully it has a great Thanksgiving too. Enjoy the week.
I have the video on my computer. It was delightful.
I do.
I have, I've loaded into OneDrive and then I will share it.
So, how was the positioning? We were really, really trying to get the positioning on the video.
I think it worked out well.
Jumped over hurdles and. Got it done.
No, but thank you for all of your um, time, energy and effort. I, I think. Um, part of our work is to offer up to folks what's working and, you know, this is a collaborative. Inter-district, statewide, nationwide effort. We're in here. We need to learn. And grow uh from one another. And so I think it's really great that Eastline is putting them, putting ourselves out there to help. Um, you know, foster some uh thinking in other districts, um. Thank you for your power on that. Um. I just have one update that I think it's important and I will follow up with some written detail at our next um Board of Ed update. I had mentioned that we were gonna move forward with Hey Tutor. For our uh high dose tutoring, um. After diving a little bit deeper into their curriculum resources with the coaches. We weren't quite um convinced that that was the right partnership for us. And so we went back out and uh met with a few other um vendors who are on the approved state list. And we are moving forward and very excited to be moving forward with Catapult. Um, they came in within the same price range. Um, their initial quote was more than Hey Tutors. So that's why in the grant application, I went with the Hey Tutor that, uh, vendor, but we have this flexibility within the state, which is great. To change and um. We just want to make sure that we're putting high quality. Uh, curriculum in front of our students and we're really, really comfortable with Catapult. They also have been the leading. Vendor in Massachusetts, which Connecticut has modeled this program after. So um, they've been doing it for a while. Um, and our official starting date will be January eighth, so. We've signed the initial contract with them. I'm waiting for the sort of more, more official um. HR component to get that going, but uh they were already meeting with the school building, starting with scheduling and so. We're on pace to start January, January eighth and we'll do an orientation for the tutors the week before. Twelve tutors at the middle school, at least one at the high school, depending on. Interest. So I just wanted to let you know because I had said that uh, Hey Tutor, but we did change to Catapult.
We have.
We have nothing. We're up next with the.
Closes administration reports, movement and committee reports. Is there?
So new board orientation is two weeks?
December sixth.
December sixth, I can't. So I think that's two weeks.
Yeah.
Um, so Connecticut passed uh legislation that all board members of the state of Connecticut should receive. Um. Orientation or professional development their first year of service in the election. So whoever is going to come on for Candace needs to attend that. Esteban, you probably should attend it.
Can I go?
Yeah, you should. You probably should.
Yep.
Um. So, busy weekend. Cave um was busy.
Coming on, uh. In terms, you said it's December sixth, so we have to sort out. Getting the new person in by then. Got you.
The state legislature says they have to have the professional development within their first year of service.
Here's the other thing too.
But it's not enforceable.
Hey, it's still, we just got an update today. They're still working on the uh, the toolkit and information, so that it didn't come out yet. Uh, either, so there will be something. September sixth doesn't work.
Down the line, not a year from now.
Not a year, no, it has to be, they have to complete it within.
He only does this every two years because elections are only every. Two years, so they only do this class every two years. Um.
It's, do you remind me, I know that there was um, like a new board member.
It's a blue book, purple book.
If you don't.
We have about three of them left.
You have the packet, but the day itself is.
Yeah, you know, I, I thought the day was really valuable.
Um, this is like a training that the state is providing to.
Yeah.
Separate piece.
I think I got more stuff.
Yeah.
I got the packet, then more stuff when I went to the.
Um, busy.
So is there like, can I? So can we try to have someone nominated on a December fourth meeting? So logistics, you know, so Candace, you get sworn in. On the morning of the fourth.
This is what I was told.
There's some time after, before our meeting. So that opens it up, so. Need have. Okay, so we need to try to then get it on the December fourth.
Yeah, you need.
Agenda.
Here.
Identify. Yeah, okay. So that's what our goal, our goal is then the fourth, because then they can go on the sixth.
Place one on the fourth, but they have a thing on the sixth.
Yes, um, okay.
Okay.
Olivia pays attention to the meetings.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
foreseeable show.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. I just want to make sure I have the timing right.
So, um, Cave has a new president. Leonard Lockhart was appointed, elected the president. Um, he is coming out of the gate. He is.
He came out of the gate, boy.
He is.
Full of energy.
Soulful of energy and he just is so excited for this role. Him and his vice president Meg um are gonna start making their rounds with all the boards of education in state. They are gonna be showing up at Board of Ed meetings and asking for what they could do for you. They are available by phone. If you want them to do something called. They are looking for board members to participate. They are looking for legislators to participate. They are not gonna take no for an answer. They want people to be a part of this. Um. They are talking, bringing up the fact that we are agents of the state, agents of the state, agents of the state. We are not just elected to be town Board of Ed members. We are actual state members of the board. We are. Supposed to be enacting and pushing forth state legislation. That is part of our Board of Ed jobs. So they're pushing that, um. But it's. Leonard and Meg are ready to go. It's all about the students. What can we do for our kids and. That's the whole, how this whole weekend was, was why, why are we doing this? Why are we here? And it's. It was, that's, could be heard and felt all weekend. It was amazing. The students, I did a legislative. Thing on Saturday, hot legal topics. The room was full of kids. Full of students asking questions, looking for answers, looking for feedback. And a lot of it was on affirmative action, uh, college essays and college apps process going forward and the kids had so many questions for the attorneys and. The attorney was like, holy cow, look at all these kids in this room. It was full of students. It was great. It was phenomenal. The kids, all weekend were great. He's just awesome. I don't know if Elise or Candace, you guys have anything to say? Jeff, Annalise, you guys were there.
Oh, I'm so in. For sure, and invigorating and exciting and. It's really a great place to be because so many people are coming uh at one spot and you get to have opportunities to talk to them. About how things are running and they're just, they're some of the things that they're challenged with. Um, but most importantly, you know, you get to see the kids come in and hear from them, listen to them. Uh, see them perform with, you know, their incredible talents. We had the gospel choir there, which, you know. Yeah, it was.
So phenomenal.
It was amazing. So I, I encourage every single board member to participate. In Cave, I think that uh, that only has made me a better board member. Uh, I think that it will make each and every other board member a better board member.
Lushes up your energy for why you're doing, why are, why are you sitting here?
It does re-energize you. I concur with both of everything that you said. I think the highlights are. Absolutely coming from the students. Um, I. There are a lot of good offerings during the day, so in some case, in some ways, it's a little bit hard to pick what the right thing to.
We had discussion about that at our board of directors meeting about some of those things, maybe offering a session on Friday and on Saturday because it's hard to pick.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And I mean, I think, you know. We talked a little bit, I think maybe it was last year, we tried to do, do we like a divided conquer and, you know, but they all, they all are. Valuable workshops, um. Yeah, I think the, the student um. Q and A was really insightful. Um, and some of those questions they received. Um. That, that were not pre-planned. Um. And then, yeah, I think just re-engaging and, and you hear and interact from. Board members and superintendents from all across the state and, you know, sometimes I think. For me anyway, you know, you kind of get in the, the Eastline vibe, right? You're kind of, and, and. It's the experiences in other communities and districts are. It's, the experiences in other communities and districts are so different and. You know, on one hand, I feel so fortunate to work with this board and its district, um, but, but it's really en- engaging because people, you know, ask you have the. It's, it's very collaborative and um, it just. I don't know if we have really a lot of those opportunities outside of that, so valuable. Thank you for.
Okay, so that closes committee reports and we have board comments, future agenda items. Hearing done, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second by Candace, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 No, you're an aye on the journey. And then we move to the.